Hey everybody, welcome to the Common Folk Podcast with Ben, Morgan and Andy.
Welcome back to another week of Common Folk.
You're exactly right, Ben. I'm excited about this one getting after it here, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. So a different topic that we haven't tackled before. We've got a guest here, a local guy by the name of Greg Page. Greg, how you doing?
Doing good. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, for sure. So what we wanted to try to tackle was Greg is running for the school board, the local school board, right?
Correct.
And this is a topic that it seems like I keep seeing more and more and hearing more and more on social media and in the news of common folks like us trying to get involved in what's going on with the schools and why. So I was hoping to speak with Greg a little bit today about not only to introduce him, but to find out what's going on, you know, what's motivating you? What's, what have you experienced? I mean, you've got kids in the district and have gone through the district, so on and so forth. So and how that applies to everyone else and hopefully give some folks some perspective and some motivation to get after some of these things on their own.
Yeah, I think what we're really looking at is kind of putting responsibility back into the people's hands, right? Like if you want to change, be that change, go make that change. And that's why we brought Mr. Page in here to kind of talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think to start Greg, maybe, you know, the most basic question, tell us just a little bit about yourself, what you do and what you've got going on.
Sure. So Greg Page, I live here at Beaver Lake, just outside of Plattsam, Nebraska. Live my wife Jenny, my two kids, Mason and Emerson, both go to school here at Conestoga. Have an older son, I'm a Gold Star parent, have an older son that passed away this last August, was killed in duty in Afghanistan. I work for Cisco Systems as a computer security engineer and lead a team for them. My motivation around kind of the school board side of it is I grew up in a smaller community where parents, families, you are part of that community, you're part of the volunteer, it's your job to kind of step up and help with, you know, the community involvement. So that was really kind of my main motivation in going towards this is wanting to help out. And obviously I found out more things as we kind of get into it of what all is needed from a school, excuse me. But that's kind of the basics of me.
What you said Gold Star parent, what does that mean?
Yeah, so not a club anybody wants to be a part of. My son was killed in service. They were in Afghanistan trying to help get Afghanistan and American people out of the country as the Taliban was taking over. He was killed by a suicide bomber, came in with a suicide vest and detonated at the gate as they were trying to get people to safety.
Yeah, I think most people are probably familiar with that story, you know, from a national perspective. You're, you have two in the district right now. What grades?
Correct. I have a seventh grader going into eighth grade and a fifth grader going into sixth grade.
Cool.
And he's in class with Joel.
Yeah, our boy. Yeah, I know that.
So we've known the Pages for a second.
Yeah, for a little while. You threw me off track.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Sometimes you ask me and you're like, wait, where's that kid or like who's that girl? So I'm just trying to remind you. I mean, I know he knew, but just reminding you.
We'll figure out if the Pages have good boys or not. We'll figure that out. They must. They're here, right?
He's not the one I worry about. It's the daughter.
Oh.
Oh, right. We have, oh, and we have two, you know. This is how this goes. Sorry, go ahead, Ben, since I interrupted you.
Yeah, well, where was I going with that? So have your kids, those two, have they been in the Conestoga, the local district since go from kindergarten or?
They have. We, we moved out here just after my daughter Emerson was born. So they've both gone through the school system here. And that was part of the reason that we moved when we did was we want to make sure wherever we were at was the place that they could go through school kind of their entire time and not have to pull them out and move them, you know, later or halfway through their education.
Now, where'd you guys live or you talked about when you grew up? Like where was that in Nebraska?
So I grew up in Tarkia, Missouri.
Oh, okay. Never heard of it.
Yeah, kind of northwest corner of Missouri, similar size, kind of the community we're in now. And then my junior year, we moved to Red Oak, Iowa. My dad worked for Hy-Vee food stores. So he was, he moved from the Tarkia store to the Red Oak store. So we moved my junior year and but in a little bit bigger town, especially when you come from a small town, a town of 6,000 people seems like it's huge, but still kind of that smaller community.
And you met Jenny there or no? This was later?
No, I met Jenny here in Omaha. I came back to work in Omaha. That was the closest place to kind of find work and met Jenny when we're working together. Actually, we're working at the same place.
Gotcha.
You sidebar, you said you guys were in Red Oak?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I'm driving through Red Oak tomorrow and I will be stopping at the Hy-Vee.
Nice.
He's going on a man fishing trip. They call it man day.
Oh, yes.
A day has turned into like three days. I'm not quite sure how that becomes fair.
That seems perfect.
Right, yeah. So I just need a like girl day.
Spa day or something?
Yeah, but it needs to be three days.
You gotta even it out. While I'm gone, you can do that.
Okay, who's gonna take care of the kids?
Yeah, who's gonna, yeah, there we go. Talking about personal responsibility here.
Send them over to Greg's house.
I know.
We're figuring some things out here. I already like this.
After a two and a dog, it's no more chaos. Have a few more around.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Sorry. Okay, so you said, okay, so where you grew up and then you met Jenny. But the kids being in the district, have you loved this district? Cause we're newer. Joel's only been, well, we've only been living here for a couple of years. So coming in from the outside in a bigger district, there's, you know, obviously changes and we've found, you know, smaller town, things like that. I mean, you've enjoyed it obviously for the kids.
Yeah, I think we have an incredible school and one of the things is just the amount of attention that our kids get. So my older son went to school in Omaha. He went to Millard, which was a bigger school. And it's easy to get lost in that type of a school system. And it's really not at our school where, you know, they get that attention that, you know, teachers know them by name, the other students know them by name. And, you know, I think, you know, just at a basic level, that's incredible for our kids. But on top of it, we have incredible teachers. We have an incredible school system. They're very focused on making sure that we kind of adjust with how things are changing with the times in education and curriculum and how kids learn and those types of things. So we've, we've loved the school and really proud that that's where our kids go to school.
Yeah.
You mentioned, you know, like you said, the teachers know all the kids and everyone knows each other. And I think even like you said, where you guys were in Omaha and we were in the Papillion area for a little while. Certainly within that school itself, like the elementary school that we were at, it was tight, you know, everyone knew each other and so on and so forth. But after that, they didn't, you know what I mean? Once you go to the middle school, you go to the high school. Where today, in these small districts like Conestoga, the, the high school teachers have a general idea of who also those kids are in the elementary school. Not only because of, you know, the families that are coming up, but just because it's just a small community. So that's, I think that's the big difference. They know what's coming. They know, they know what they're, what they're in for.
I mean, it really is a nice scenario and I grew up in the same type of scenario where, I mean, through preschool, all the way up through your senior year, everybody knows everybody and everyone's kind of looking out for you. My mother used to kind of say, you know, in Lynch, the community raises you, you know, it's not just the parents. And it really is that way. I mean, I would get in trouble at Ben King's house across town. And before I even got home on my bicycle, mom already knew and I was in trouble. That's how it goes.
That is so true. I actually ran into a couple, just the other day I was at Hy-Vee and I ran into four other women. And then I was grocery shopping with one that we just like kept going down the same aisle, talking about everything. I came home and I had said something to Joel, who's in fifth grade and he's like, how do you already know that? I'm like, well, it's 5:00 PM, you get out at 3:45, you know, that's pretty quick turnaround.
Hour, yeah, to figure this all out, yeah.
So when you say small district, let's give perspective, like what's a graduating class in this town?
Yeah, so it varies, but I would say roughly you're looking at around 80 kids per class.
Okay, okay.
So your kind of internal call to action here was you already like what we have and you appreciate it and you know it's great. But you just, you want to kind of throw your hat in the ring here and make it even better. Like what, what kind of motivates you the most here?
Yeah, there's a couple of things that kind of drove me to do this. So one, at our school right now, we're going through trying to get a bond passed. We have just facility issues overall where we don't have enough room for students to, you know, learn. We don't have enough room for students to do different activities that we have. We have issues with maintenance where we need to replace, you know, heating, cooling systems, things like that. So I've been involved with a committee, a community committee that's working on that right now. So that's one of the areas where, you know, we want to make sure that we're on top of that and working with it. So just to continue to work with that was a big piece of it. And you look at, you know, people often say, well, the, the class size hasn't grown that much. Why do we need a bigger school? Well, if you look 20 years ago, the way we taught was around lecture, you know, you had a student, a teacher up front, they would teach to a class sitting at their desks. Well, the way we teach now between technology, between more of the interactive learning, just the space that's needed is different and then keeping on top of that. So that's one of the things I would like to make sure that, you know, we continue to do a great job of is staying on top of how do you kids learn? What are the newest things that are coming out?
And I would think, I mean, you want your mentality to be, we want to make this to where we're attracting families, we're attracting new students. We don't want to just stay at 80 kids per class. I mean, we want to be going the other way. I mean, I think that's what a healthy district, a healthy city, a healthy town, they're all, you're always continuously growing.
Yeah, and I think that's, any community wants to continue to grow. They want that for, you know, many reasons. They want it for, you know, the, the different things that are available to you as a bigger town or as you grow, as those, you know, the tax burden reduces, as you have more people in that community, there's, you know, home values, there's all kinds of reasons. And the school is a big driver of that. And, you know, if you look at the studies, that shows that the school is one of the main reasons you get new families, new communities, you know, building out.
Oh yeah, it's huge. It's the first thing I think a lot of parents, people look at is even people without kids, it's amazing how they want to look at the school district, you know?
Yeah.
What, you know, it always comes up.
Our, our school district, there's a couple of things that are unique, but a couple of things I think that are the same, you know, all across country in these small districts. And that one, there's a few communities that feed into our school, right? So you've got the Murray group, you've got Union, which probably doesn't bring much. Does Union come to Conestoga?
Yep, Union, Nahaka.
Nahaka, yeah.
Yeah, the Beaver Lake area.
Beaver Lake, yeah. So multiple communities feeding the school district, all of them being very small. The biggest one probably Murray, I guess, which is going to be what, 1,000 people?
Yeah, I think that's about right.
Somewhere in that range. But then what is unique is that we've got this lake community that a lot of these small towns don't have. So this lake that popped up in what the seventies or something like that. And has just been a big attractor for new homes, for people moving south. Excuse me, getting just a little bit outside of town, you know, not, not far, not far enough where it's not too bad of a drive, but far enough where you don't have to deal with the hectic of, you know, the Omaha area. And so that is really feeding this school district and making it grow at a rapid rate. Where you talk about, you know, someone said, well, the class sizes aren't changing. Well, they are. I mean, we, there's, a house goes up for sale down here and it's gone in a week or two. And the new construction is through the roof, you know, so that, that has to be planned for.
Yeah, and people talk about, you know, I hear this at schools all the time about that the class sizes aren't growing and they look at the high school or the older classes. And typically when you have growth, it's in those younger grades and that's what we're seeing at our school district. Because it's a lot of times, you know, like I mentioned earlier, we moved because we wanted to get our kids into the school district and not have to move later. So a lot of times when that happens, you see those younger families are moving in and that's where that growth is. And that's what we're seeing at our school. It's those younger grades that are starting to get bigger. You know, the high school, we're seeing a little bit of growth, but not nearly as much as we are in like those kindergarten, first grade classes.
Yeah, it's unfortunate actually when you walk in to the school, there's actually an area that's kind of under the stairs that they're teaching in, you know, I mean, for some, maybe some resources or, you know, resource and is it art on a cart? I mean, it's just like, we definitely need the space and going back to what you said, Ben, I mean, this has got to be happening everywhere. Not, obviously it's not just here. This has got to be a normal, I don't want to say normal, but a common theme across.
So I kind of want to throw this question at everybody, but let's start with you, Greg. Everyone hates to pay taxes and higher taxes. And why is education always the first thing we chop? And why is that always like, I feel like when we have the old money talk and the old hats down at the coffee shop, education's okay to cut, but the new highway or new road, we need that or that should be paved over here versus rock or whatever. But for why? Why is this mentality really across the US, I don't care if it's inner city, rural like we're talking about? Why is education always on the chopping block and it just seems to be so acceptable?
Yeah, I think part of it is just, it's one of the few things that we vote on for our taxes. You know, a lot of those things just automatically get rolled in or put in at a federal level or a state level. And we don't really get a say in those where on the taxes or on the school taxes you do. The other piece is, you know, a lot of times we don't do as good a job of messaging that as we should of what is, what is it that we're using this money for? And how does this help us, you know, for the community? How does it help our schools? How does it help our families? And I think a lot of times it's just not really understanding how it's being used, what it's being used for and how it benefits everybody. You always have those people that say, well, I don't have kids in school.
Yep.
Well, again, you know, we talked earlier, the schools still benefit the community, they benefit, you know, the families that live in those areas. And again, you know, helps bring people in, spread that tax burden, things like that. So there's benefits there that I don't think people always understand. So I think a lot of it's just you've got to get out there and be vocal and transparent about, hey, this is how we're using the money. This is why we need it.
The communication piece is huge. I think that, that probably resonates all across the country with, and really with, with anything. You know, you know, Greg and local folks who listen to this will know that our district's been trying to do this bond. And for me, from the outside looking in, that's exactly what I think the problem is. And it sounds like you probably think some of the same is that people just aren't fully educated on what's going on. And there's opportunities to do stuff, you know, people will come out afterwards and say, well, you should have gone to the, to the meeting and you could have learned everything you wanted to learn and so on and so forth. And while that's true, that's just sometimes you have to figure out how to get to people where they are.
And that's a struggle when you have, you know, so many different ways to communicate, social media, but not everybody's on social media. Newspaper, but not everybody reads a newspaper and you've got to figure out how do we get to the most people and share that information? And it's tough when you have, you know, the thousands of different ways we have to communicate now.
What did you say? Newspaper? What is that?
Wait, is that a thing? I actually this time around for the bond, I got a phone call and I, and I liked that. It was just like, hey, just so you know, you know, this is going on, you know, make sure you're there to vote.
Yeah.
Where, I don't know if they did a poll or how many people actually answered or even if it was a message. So, I mean, there's so many different ways, but yeah.
Well, and part of the communication and getting the word out, I, I feel this might roll into where you have 15% on this extreme end screaming, yelling, they're really loud. You got 15% on the exact opposite end acting the same way, crazy, loud, grabbing all this attention. And I feel like you have 85% of everyone else in the middle there like, okay, what is really going on? Is this school bond worth it? Or is this a waste of money? Is this a money pit? You know, and how, how do we get the masses to focus in on maybe a quieter message? You know what I mean? That, that makes the most sense.
Yeah, you definitely have to hit that middle group and, and that's where you want to influence, right? There's going to be people that are against it no matter what. There's people that are for it no matter what. It's that middle group that you really want to make sure you're getting that info out to.
But I feel it's such a challenge. Like even if you go on YouTube and just look up news, you got your first 20 videos are crazy loud heads here, crazy loud heads here. And they're screaming at each other like it's, like they're talking NFL football. Who's going to win? I'm a Packers fan. I'm a Minnesota Vikings fan. You know what I mean? Like, that's where the conversation goes. And it's, it's not conversation at that point. It's just who can be the loudest.
And absolutely. And that middle group is so busy, you know, so like you said, trying to get to them, trying to get their attention. Cause their attention's on all these things that we've already been talking about. They've got kids in school, they got a full-time job.
Right.
You know, they got a house to maintain, you know, so on and so forth. So trying to get their intention is really tough. And that's, that's something that I don't know what I would do to try to, to try to get hold of those folks.
Yeah, and it's hard. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of people just trying to get them to understand how different school is now than it was when they went to school. Because, you know, they have this vision of, you know, well, I went to school 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and we didn't need more space. We had the same amount of kids. And one of the things that I'm really passionate about is bringing new programs to our school. So last year I started a, it's called Cyber Patriot. It's put on by the Air Force Association, but it's a program to get students interested in cybersecurity and interest in the field. So we brought that program to the school last year. And there's a lot of programs like that I would like to see happen. I mean, especially in our community, like the ag tech stuff is huge, right? You talk about, you know, being able to work on kind of the technology side of it or the plotting or all of those types of things that are out there that, you know, we have traditional ag classes. But there's a lot of programs out there that you can bring in to start looking at some of those, which I think for our community would be huge. But in general, you look at robotics, you look at some of the other different programs that are out there, there's a lot of them that we could bring in. But again, we've got to have the space, we've got to have the facilities to do that.
Well, and you mentioned that the neighboring school here did the, just completed a brand new facility out front there. And it's really focused in on the tech side. I don't know if it's all automotive inside that building, but I think it's a lot of automotive.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but yeah, it's definitely a tech, yeah, tech space.
And that is something, I don't know why, but it seems like through the nineties and into the 2000s, that got pushed to the side. You know, I don't know what happened, but even where I went to college, that program was dropped. A lot of the machinist machinery type of stuff and tech stuff just got dropped while I was there, like just buildings closed down.
And now you hear more and more about that. People are talking about trade schools again and getting into the trades, right? Because of the cost of college, the, you know, the other options that are out there. And I think those programs are more important now than they've probably ever been.
So is that one of your bigger platforms that you like to stand on is let's bring that trade, let's bring that tech back into it?
It is. I think that, you know, again, coming down to what brings people to our school, what makes our school exciting, what gets people in our school excited is, is, are those things. And those are main career paths for people that, you know, they maybe don't have that opportunity right now. That if we can bring that to them and get them that feel, that gets them a jumpstart in a career down that path in the future.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent for those tech programs. When, when we were younger and in school, we, we had that. And when I had the option to pick classes, I was always picking one of those. You know, whether it be automotive, woodworking, metalworking, some kind of electronic design where we were making like circuit boards and things like that. I mean, that, I loved that stuff. And it definitely put me on the path that I'm on today. You know, being mechanical minded and doing what I'm doing. So I think it's huge. And they, and a hundred percent, they pulled most of those programs, you know, after we left.
I actually, I went to a smaller school than all you guys. So I actually looked ahead and I started manipulating that, what classes I could take and win my freshman year. So my senior year, because I took all the trigometry and geometry and everything else, all that, you know, level 300 type classes, I spent half the day down in the shop. I took welding, advanced welding, automotive tech, woodworking too. Like I had them all lined up. So I just basically camped out down there and got to do all the fun stuff. I mean, we did some crazy stuff, tore apart lawnmower completely. Everybody had their own lawnmower and we had to strip down that to where it was just a block. Then we had to rebuild it. And when you pulled it, if you got, if you, if it started on the first pole, you got an A.
Really?
Second pole, A minus. I mean, those, I mean, those kind of stressful, you know?
So what'd you get?
Oh, I got an A plus. Give me a break.
Don't be lying now.
I'm not, I'm not. But, but no, that attracted me. And I think a lot of it was just being inquisitive, wanting to figure things out. And we always, because we still use draft boards back then, you know, with the T square and the whole, the whole nine yards. And even back then, when we would have college professors from Wyoming Tech and different institutions like that come in, they're like, well, this is why kids from Lynch are the best and always graduate at the top of the class. Cause you guys still use T squares. You guys still know how to read a tape measure. Like just stuff that I assumed everybody knew how to do. He's like, no, 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 they get to college and we got to show them how to read a tape, a tape measure.
Well, nowadays, you know, the technology has advanced so much. A lot of that stuff in one way or another has become obsolete, other than, you know, something like a tape measure, I mean, that's going to be timeless. But you had touched on earlier Greg about the tech and what's going on in our schools. What, what is our district doing with tech? You know, in terms of like electronics and, you know, the internet and, you know, the internet of things and all the stuff that's happening with that, you know?
Yeah, our school has been pretty good about staying proactive on all of that. And if you look at what happened with COVID, I feel like our school was very prepared for the remote learning as it popped up and they did an incredible job. Through work, I've heard and talked to a lot of schools that really struggled with that transition. They weren't set up either from the, you know, they didn't have laptops or iPads for the students or they didn't have the availability for the connectivity or everything was hosted in their school. So they didn't have a way to get the students to connect to it. And Conestoga did a great job of, you know, they had their abilities out on the cloud through Google. They had devices for all the students. They had, you know, Zoom set up. They were able to quickly get adapted and switched over to it. Overall, they've kind of done a great job of that to continue to use, you know, there's different government programs like E-rate where it lets you, you know, get funding for internet connectivity, for wireless, for some help with laptops, things like that, where they do a great job of kind of staying in front of that. There's obviously, like I said, there's a lot of things that I think we could do more, but you need the space, you need the facilities, you need to, you know, have the area to do it. And that's one of the things that I think as we move forward, I'll continue to push hard on. Cause I think that's something again, that draws people to our community, to our school.
What do you think, you know, you've touched on a few different things here in terms of our school district in particular. And again, this, this applies on a national level. What really are the main things that, that you think need to get done? It seems like most of the stuff that you're talking about surrounds dollars that the district needs.
It is. I, I think, again, we've done a great job with our staff at the school, our teachers, our, you know, the students are attentive, they get a good education there. I think what we're looking at from our perspective is just what are the things that we can do to make it that much better? And how do we, you know, get students to explore different things? Like I said, you know, there's people out there that, you know, they maybe would really use the automotive example of automotive tech. You know, there's people that would love that career and aren't getting that opportunity right now in, in schools all over as those programs have been pulled. So a lot of it comes back to, you know, do we have the equipment? Do we have the facilities to do it? So it does come down to the dollars for the most part, you know, it's not a decision, it's not a, we don't have the right people. It's literally where do we, you know, where do we teach those classes?
So for anybody that's interested in, in going down a path like this, what, what does that look like? Like how do you, you know, from the time when you decide, I want to help make a difference, it's time for me to get involved in the schools, what, what, what happens from there?
Yeah, so it's an interesting process. There's a lot more to it than I think most people know in regards to regulations, in regards to, you know, kind of the things that are involved and that a board looks at and the different funding and those. So there's a lot of education that goes into it and I'm still, you know, learning a lot of that. And some of that will come as, if I get onto the board of, you know, there's classes that they put you through. But there's a lot of stuff out there online that you can get engaged in to, to learn more about it. But once you submit, it is done through an election. So we just went through our primaries. We had eight people going for three positions. So in the primary, they narrowed it down to six. When we go into the November election, they'll pick three out of those six, the voters will. The process is really, the biggest thing is, you know, coming back to that communication of, you know, get, you've got to go out and, you know, obviously registered to get into the election. But at that point, it's, you know, getting your information out there, why you think you'd be a good candidate, what is you want to do? And I think that's what people want to see is, you know, again, somebody that's going to be transparent, somebody that's going to come in and wants to make some good changes. And it's not that there's things that are wrong there now necessarily. It's, hey, what, what's the additional things that you would like to bring? And how do you help drive things on that board? You know, what's your talent or your unique space that maybe somebody else or that isn't on that board right now?
Okay, so for someone like me that maybe doesn't know a ton, so there's, obviously there's a board right now and you're saying there's three.
Right now, there's six on the board. There's going to be three open spots.
Okay, and so how long can you stay on the board?
Yeah, it's a four-year term and then you come back up for reelection.
Okay, alright.
And how, how many times can you be reelected indefinitely or?
Yeah, indefinitely on there.
Yeah.
And typically what you see for the most part from school board members is, you know, they kind of stay while their kids are on. And then usually a couple of years after that, and then, you know, they kind of get somebody new in there. But yeah, it can vary. I mean, you may have people that are just passionate about it that, you know, spend years on there.
Okay, and each school system is going to be different with different, or is it always six? Do you, I mean, do you know? Does it depend on how big the town is?
Typically you're right around six though. Sometimes I'll go with, you know, an odd number for voting purposes, things like that. But it's usually right around six.
Okay.
And what kind of power does the school, school board have? Like what, what, what things are discussed and what decisions are they able to make?
Yeah, so there's all kinds of stuff that's going on in the world right now with school boards as you, you know, you see some of the stuff on the news. But you know, typically you're dealing with the financial situation. This is one of the things that our school hit was we've gotten a fairly bad financial place, I'm going to say 10 years ago. And the school board made some decisions that they had to make to kind of bring the school back. And we went to a four-day school week and some of those types of things. We had closed the Nahaka school, one of our other school buildings and consolidated. So it's, you know, there's some decisions like that that you've got to make that are tough decisions for the school to keep things going. How do you allocate funds? How do you make sure that you're doing, using funds in the right way, maintenance, those types of things? But then there's all kinds of things happening now as you see, you know, in the news again, parents that are upset over, you know, the learning criteria that's out there or what's going on with, you know, gender, things like that, that the school board has to be involved in. So there's some interesting and tough decisions out there that the board gets involved with.
Yeah, I mean, just off the top of my head, there's like a theory out there that has to do with critical race that I think.
Yeah, certainly a hot topic out there right now.
Yeah, I don't know. We, we don't need to dive into that quite yet.
Yeah, and, and things like that typically, there's a fair amount of federal regulation, state regulation. So, you know, kind of making sure you're falling within those, which is kind of across the board, everything the school does has, you know, regulations around it in certain areas. But yeah, those are great examples of, you know, you've got to make sure that you're not outside of the scope of what's allowed. But, yeah, those are great examples of, you know, you've got to make sure that you're not outside of the scope of what's allowed by law.
Well, and that was my other thought was, do you have somebody else or the board? Do they have like somebody guiding too, or like not a boss, but you know what I mean? Do you have to stay, stay in, like you just said, some guidelines? So?
Yeah, so there's state representatives you work with. We have obviously, you know, lawyers that we work with, financial people that, you know, kind of help us with, those types of things. But this is where it really becomes valuable for a board to have people that understand that. So having somebody on the board with a financial background is obviously a huge help. Having somebody on with a technology background, somebody on with, you know, the education background, so that you have some guidance even within the board. But there's always kind of advisors, so to speak, that you can reach out to and work with.
There's so many moving pieces there. Uh, you know, like you say, if you get people on the board with certain expertise, also a big benefit probably is that it's gonna save the, the district a lot of money, rather than having to go out and pay somebody for consultation or whatever.
Absolutely.
And so you bring that tech piece.
Yeah, I, I think, um, kind of the tech piece. And then, you know, again, just looking at it from, I, I kind of lean on my, my business background a little bit, just in that, you know, looking at how do we handle some of those pieces? I mean, I, I don't want to say that the school is a, a business, but there are certain aspects to it that you have to handle in that way. So I think the technology and the business side are where I can benefit the school.
Well, and in business, it's all about wins. So let's talk about the most important piece here, the athletics. I want more football wins. I want more soccer. I want volleyball team back on top. And that's probably, I think where the school board really faces it. Probably maybe out of whack compared to the things that really matter is, oh man, we need to get rid of this coach. We lost the first three games of the year.
Yeah, we need to quit getting beat by those punks down the road or whatever. Let's get, let's get the school board on that.
Yeah, and our local school board just went through interviewing a new athletic director. So, you know, those are the things that you.
I'm already mad at you.
How do you, uh, and, and how do you, you know, make sure you've got the right fit for that, that's gonna do the right things for the programs? And, you know, that's a, that's a long-term commitment. You bring somebody in and you've got to trust that they're gonna do the right things and make sure you interview well. So, um, you know, kudos to the current board for, uh, for going through that process. That's tough.
And these are big sports nuts, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, you know, we, we poke fun at and, and say things like, well, does sports, you know, really matter that much? Why are we focusing so much? Well, it, in a lot of ways it does, you know, it teaches youngsters, you know, how to work as a team, how to listen to, you know, a parental, a coach. Some, you know, a grown-up that's not your parents.
Yeah.
Like, there's a lot of really good things that come out of youth athletics. And so I, in a, in a weird way, I do kind of like how crazy sometimes it can be as far as, man, I want a good coach, I want a good staff, I want a good program. Like, I, I do think it matters.
I think, I think that's a great, um, parallel to what we were talking about earlier with like the tech and the, um, you know, the automotive classes and the metal classes and so on and so forth. There's so much emphasis put on the sports. And while a lot of the kids do play, not, they don't all, you know what I mean? So it's not every kid in the district that benefits from these sports programs. But we, we do put a lot of emphasis, emphasis on them and rightfully so. But that mentality, if that same mentality was put towards some of these tech programs.
Yeah. And I love these programs. Like let these kids find their, their path.
Yeah.
And then we can support them. And we need to bring, constantly be bringing in or exploring new, you know, types of programs or the tech programs. And, you know, those contests, you know, my wife's a science teacher, uh, so they do this destination imagination competition. Um, and it's, it's wonderful, cause a lot of times it's kids that aren't in volleyball. They're not in football, but they really get into robotics. And so here's a platform for them to compete against schools, not only around Nebraska or the Midwest, but on a international level, if they make it to nationals. So like, I, I'm all for that. It doesn't have to be football. It can be robotics or automotive, you know, but there's a, there's a way to do it. And, you know, a lot of the focus now is mental health, you know, talking about that, especially with the youth. Um, and it, there's been a lot of studies done where if you don't have school pride, the kids don't, the student body doesn't. It affects their mental health big time. And if you have a good football team or a basketball team, it's always going to state. Your, your overall student body has a better state of mental health. And that could, that could actually be used, you know, on, in other programs. It doesn't have to be basketball. But you have to have something where these students, your population is proud of their school, you know? And I, I just, it doesn't have to be sports. I don't want to get off on that tangent. It can be anything. But you do have to constantly getting better and giving kids a reason to be proud, I guess, is what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a lot of benefits to sports, right? I mean, from the, you know, the, the mental aspect of it, both, you know, the challenge, learning to win, lose, compete, be a good sport. Um, but like you said, the mental health aspect of the whole community around that. And you get into a smaller community, it's a huge thing, right? Uh, Friday night football.
Totally.
Yeah, and, and I'm always amazed at the South, you go down there and see the giant stadiums, you know, that they have that are bigger than most of the college stadiums for high school teams. And, um, you know, they've done a great job of making sure that when they do that, they also get the money in there for, you know, those programs at their schools. And they kind of balance that out and use those together, because if athletics is important, hey, let's tag on to it and see if we can get some, uh, get some academic out of this too.
Yeah. What about things like, and, and I've had a little bit of experience with this, being on the fire department and the cadets that we have that are high school kids coming in the fire department. And you have, um, your family has this military background with your son. Are you familiar with the programs that, um, we're doing in the school district in that category?
I'm not.
Okay. So I was just, I was just curious. I'm not either, but I know there's like these, um, ROTC programs and things like that.
Yeah, the ROTC program I'm familiar with.
Okay, okay. That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, and, and, um, there's several things in there that, uh, you know, there's different companies that also support those types of things where they'll pull in if you're part of the ROTC program or you're part of some of these different groups. You know, FFA is a great example where, you know, there's things that companies will do to help sponsor you through school. They'll help, you know, get you a jump start into a career with other, you know, companies.
Yeah.
You know, that's one for us, you know, we actively pull at Cisco from, you know, ROTC or from people that are just getting out of the military and transitioning over and those types of things. So there's all kinds of benefits to having those programs that again, kind of fall on the, hey, if you don't have those, you're, you know, basically cutting kids out of some options that maybe helped them out.
And I'll tell you, you know, from firsthand experience, working with those kids, um, that, that are on the fire department, that are cadets, that are in the ROTC program, you know, they're signed up to go to the guard or what one kid's going to be, he's trying to be some kind of air medic.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, uh, these kids are so focused and such hard workers. And it's as a result of those kinds of things that they've been involved in, along with other things as well, their parenting and so on and so forth. But, um, it's so cool to see how that's influenced them and, and really got them focused and doing a good job at things.
Well, and it was something that they could get involved in that led them down a path, you know, early on where, you know, there's a lot of us at that age that had no idea what we were gonna do yet or trying to make those decisions. And when they have those types of things to give them that guidance, I mean, that's a huge help.
And once again, they're part of a team. Like I've seen some of those ROTC kids that hang out together. They, you know, I call a lot of, broadcast a lot of games. And when they do their march out and they set the flag, like they are on point. Like it matters, you know what I mean?
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back to the board, I was, I was realizing while you were talking a little bit about there that there's a lot that I don't know. And I suspect probably the people that are listening don't either, in what a school board really does. And you've already touched on it. But one of the things you touched on was like interviewing for the AD. I, I hadn't really thought about that. So do, do the, do the boards kind of have the ultimate authority in hiring these higher level positions within the district?
Yeah, they typically do. And, you know, one of the other things that we have coming up is our superintendent, this was her last year. So, um, we brought in, I say we, the, the current board brought in an interim superintendent. So they went through those interviews to bring somebody in for the next couple of years. And then they'll do, um, you know, a full-time replacement for that superintendent. So going through those interviews and, and working on that. So that's where, again, kind of have those differences in expertise that each board member has, makes a big difference as you're interviewing people and trying to figure out, hey, do they fit kind of all the pieces that we need to make our school successful?
And, and Greg, keep saying we, cause you're gonna feel the common folk bump. It's alright, just assume the role.
Perfect.
Right.
I think, uh, I mean, that, that hits even more home and, and how important it is to make sure that the right folks are on the board. Because those are things that I hadn't thought about, you know, that's, that, that's a decision that'll be made, you know, for that superintendent, that's gonna last for years. That once it's made, it's made. And all the parents, you know, it's like, you don't have a choice. So the, the board is your elected official that's, that is, um, acting as, as you, as the individual, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, and then that's a great point, you know, where you hire a superintendent. It's tough to reverse that decision if things don't work out. So you want to make sure you get that right up front.
Yeah, so you need to be, you need to be looking for, it, it just makes me think and realize, you need to be more involved in understanding who are these folks that are running for these positions? And you want to get people in these positions that are like-minded, that you think are gonna be making decisions like you would make, you know, in the best interest of, you know, your little family, which applies to everyone else.
It is, and, and you bring up a great point of, you know, it is that responsibility. But at the same point, you've got to also be willing to listen to your community, because what you think is the correct answer might not be what the rest of the community feels is. So you've got to be, you know, listening to what people say. You've got to be open to those conversations. And, you know, maybe the way that you think it's gonna work isn't the right way. And people have a better idea. You've got to make sure you're, you know, listening to that and always learning.
So, so we, we kind of touched on this a little earlier about, you know, getting our message out and how do you get your message out? Greg, what have you been doing? And, and there's a, and Ben, you touched on this. It's a personal responsibility, like especially being a parent in this school district. I, I should, I should be actively out there looking at the candidates, kind of getting an idea. But, you know, it's also goes on you guys, you know, who are running for this position. How are you getting your message out? Or how have you personally been, been doing this?
Yeah, so it starts with what's my message, right? And we talked a little bit about the things that I would like to do in, you know, adding those programs and making sure that we're, you know, building our facilities correctly and being involved in those types of things. I've also been pretty vocal about the things that I've done in the past. Like I mentioned, I brought the Cyber Patriot program. Having been a coach with the school in, in different sports over the years, um, being a community leader with, I'm a Boy Scout leader. Been involved with the building committee, you know, just the different things that I've done in the past to show involvement with the school and, and being involved there. From the platform, um, you know, we've primarily done it through social media. We've done, you know, yard signs, things like that as well. But for the most part, it's been through social media that we've really kind of driven, you know, my campaign to get the word out there. And it's really just been about who am I, what do I stand for, what do I want to see happen?
Well, and I think going through it, going about it that way shows firsthand that, hey, I'm, I'm willing to get on board with the next generation or the next wave of, of technology. If you're not just relying on newspaper ads or yard signs, no, you're, you're getting on social media to get that message out.
Yeah, and again, it comes down to, you know, like the information on the bond and how do you talk to people? There's so many different ways to communicate that I'm sure I'm only hitting, you know, a certain percentage of what I should be in that message. And I've got to make sure that I'm getting out there, whether it's, you know, going door to door, whether it's sending out mailers. But, you know, there's a lot of people that don't use social media. There's a lot of people that, um, you know, learn and get their information in different ways. So that's something as we go in, now that we're through the primary going into November, we'll look at how do we make sure we get that word out a little broader.
So you obviously know the other people that you're running against. Is that difficult because they're friends or, I mean, how does that work in a smaller? I shouldn't always say smaller town, but you know, I, it's probably could be the same thing in a big school district, but.
Yeah, and I don't know them all. I mean, I know them all by name.
Okay.
I know about half of them personally.
Yeah.
And, um, I, personally, I think it's great. We have some candidates that are running that have a really great background for what we need.
Okay.
Two of the people are actually going for reelection. So there's only one new open spot. Two are people that are currently on the board that are going for reelection again, cause their four years is up. But we've got some great candidates on there. Um, there's, you know, everybody's kind of got a different reason and platform that they're running on. But, um, I, I think we're very lucky that, I mean, any community, if you can get people that want to go help and do the right thing, take advantage of it.
Right.
The more the merrier, kind of.
Right, yeah.
I think it speaks to the community too, to have, um, that many folks interested in taking on that responsibility. You know, having a full-time job and, and kids at home and all the things. I mean, it's gotta be a commitment, right?
Yeah, I, I don't think people understand what the time commitment of it is. You know, those, those boards meet. It's not just a, hey, we meet once a month and talk for an hour about things. It's, you know, they have sessions where they're going through, you know, the financials of the school. Or they're talking about those maintenance issues, or they're, you know, interviewing athletic directors, or, you know, having those special sessions. So there's a big time commitment to it that I don't think people always understand quite how much time those people on the board put in and do.
The time commitment, and there's some pressure to it as well, obviously. I mean, now that I know you Greg and kind of where you're at, if the football team doesn't perform, I'm holding you accountable.
Oh, we're back to football. Oh, that's so funny.
I think touching on what Morgan said too, that's a very real thing as well. People don't realize, you know, you're taking on this responsibility and this commitment. And now you get on, let's say you get on and, and now you're at the football game. And the guy sitting next to you know who knows who you are and knows something that the board just did or whatever, and maybe he likes it, maybe he doesn't. I mean, you're, you're opening yourself up to all that.
Yeah, it, that's one of the things that, uh, is tough. And I, you know, I talked earlier about kind of the, the business side and of me bringing that is, you know, I've, I've learned through my work that you have to make the right decision, what you believe is right, take people's input, do the research. But you're still gonna have people that don't like the decision you made. And the school board's the same way. You're gonna make people unhappy. And you just kind of have to try to make the right decision. Again, do the research, talk to people, make the decision that you think is correct and, and stick with it. And you're gonna have people that are upset. You're gonna have people that, you know, don't like what you've done.
Oh, yeah.
But as long as you, at the end of the day, know you did what you think was best.
Yeah.
That's the way through it.
You can go to bed, you know, sleep in and.
You gotta stand for something or you're gonna fall for everything, right?
There you go.
Isn't that a song? Oh geez.
Yeah, well, that's, uh, I don't know, it's been very educational for me. There's, I realized there's a lot of things that I didn't know. Do you have, uh, you guys have any other questions for me in regards to the?
I really don't. I mean, I, I could, I could talk to you Greg all day long. You know, I really could, but I think we kind of covered the, the big points that I wanted to get after. And that was, you know, the motivation behind.
Yeah.
You know, why? Uh, and then exactly what it is, what it, what it means to be part of the board.
Is there anything that, um, you were thinking about coming in Greg that, you know, you wished we had asked or anything that you'd like to bring up about it?
No, you've covered it. The one thing I would say is, you know, it's, it's, I, I have personal feelings about this, but it's a big honor for us to be able to go out and vote. And, you know, it's amazing to me the amount of people that don't go vote, whether it's for the board or in general, but, um, take advantage of that opportunity, go vote.
Yeah, for sure. Um, I think on that, on that last deal, uh, just to put it in perspective, what, what did that bond not pass by?
So right now, our bond is sitting at a no vote of, uh, thirteen votes.
Oh gosh, I was thinking it was seventeen, so that's even closer.
Yeah, and they're still doing, um, a recount and things just because of how close it was. But that's where it was sitting, uh, at last glance.
Yeah, that's what people have to think about. You know, when you think, oh, my vote doesn't make a difference. Especially in these small towns.
I mean, even looking at the national perspective, there's been some really close races, I mean, across the board.
Yeah.
Well, and if you look at thirteen, right, that's, that's seven people that voted no, that if you could have got in front of and maybe got the right information to them or that they didn't understand, seven people go vote in the other way, changes that, so.
Yeah.
So do you feel, let me ask this real quick. Do you feel like you need to be out and about more in the community now with this? I mean, I feel like I see you at football games or, you know, I see you guys out. But do you feel that sense of pressure because, and then you gotta be on or not really? You're not trying to do that to yourself?
This is the advantage of being in a small community. We're always out and about and with your kids, you're kind of always there, you're always visible. But, um, I think it is something that you have to do, especially, you know, as a board member, you need to be out there and again, listening to what people have to say and having those conversations. So, um, I, I think it's something that I consciously have to make sure we continue to do.
Okay, yeah, good.
What, uh, for your, you know, your campaign and your run and so on and so forth, where can folks go to, you know, learn about you and what you've got going on?
Yeah, so right now we've got a Facebook page. Um, it's just Facebook slash Vote Greg page. Um, we're gonna set up a website as well. We didn't have that up and going yet, but, um, right now, most of it's on Facebook.
How long before the next vote?
Uh, the next vote is in November, so it'll be with the, the general election.
Okay.
And that's Greg with one G.
One, one G Greg.
One G Greg.
Page, P-A-G-E.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool. Um, so a couple of things, there's one, one, one other thing I wanted to ask you about if I could, and then we get into one final deal here. I don't know if you want to talk about this or not, but I think this is a good platform to do it because we have this national stage. You guys have a foundation for your son that was, uh, killed in duty. Uh, what, what is, are you, are you good with telling us a little bit about that and how that's working?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, my, my son Dagan, um, was one of thirteen service members that was killed. It was August twenty-sixth of this last year. And it, it's obviously turned our world upside down. Um, and we're trying to find the good out of it. And one of the things that we've done is put this foundation together. And if, uh, if you ever knew Dagan, he was a bit of a wild child. He lived life on his own terms. He was, uh, pretty vocal about what he was and wasn't in his life. And, um, so we've kind of said, you know, we're gonna live the Dagan way and help other people live the Dagan way as well. So we started the Corporal Dagan Page Foundation. And our goal is to use that money to support organizations that would have been close to his heart. So things around the military and veterans, um, you know, um, skateboarding, hockey, Boy Scouts, the things that he was involved in as he was growing up, um, just, uh, animals, you know, he was a big animal lover. So, you know, we've got some things going on right now with a couple of different, um, animal groups that are around adoption of dogs, um, and cats, things like that. So our goal is really just to use that money to, you know, kind of help people live the Dagan way and bring some, uh, bring some good out of a tragedy.
Cool. Um, and I think you guys are, are you guys are kind of in the infancy of this, like building the website and so on and so forth? Is that right?
We are. There is, um, so daganpage.org is up and going. We've got some information out there about, you know, Dagan, about some of the things that we have going on, some of the things that we're involved in. Um, obviously with Memorial Day coming up, there's a lot of stuff that, uh, you know, we're getting involved with, with the foundation, that the family's involved with, so. Um, but there's a lot of information out on the site of kind of about Dagan, um, and, and those different things that we're doing.
His first name is a little bit unique. How's that spelled?
D-A-E-G-A-N.
D-A-E-G-A-N-P-A-G-E.
Yep.
Dot org.
Org.
Awesome.
There we go.